Okay, I'm gonna call the committee of the whole for the February 5th. Before we rise for invocation, which is gonna be given to us by Mayor Thomas. She has a few words she should say about the invocation.
I'd just like to say that today's invocation is yesterday's invocation at the United States House of Representatives. This invocation can be viewed in its entirety at the office of Chaplain of the United States House of Representatives. And this takes some of the poetic license and guesswork and relevancy issues out of providing an invocation to you today. And if we could all please stand. Compassionate and merciful God, we give you thanks for giving us another day. Bless the members of this governing body. Give them strength, fortitude, and patience. Fill their hearts with charity, their minds with understanding, and their wills with courage to do the right thing for all of Pottstown. In the work to be done now, may they rise united to accomplish what is best for this borough and the region. For you have blessed us with many graces and given us the responsibility of being a shining light. May all that is done this day be for your greater honor and glory. Amen.
Amen.
That was provided by Reverend Patrick J. Conroy.
Okay, now the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, Mayor, thank you for those kind words. Subcommittee reports. Infrastructure.
Uh, no meeting.
No meeting. Public safety.
We did not meet this month, however, beginning with March, we are gonna meet at 6:00 PM prior to the regular council meetings on those Mondays.
Okay, economic development and business liaison.
The only thing I have right now is that the Pottstown Homeownership Initiative program's still open. We actually granted two new grants this month, and so we're looking forward to helping those homeowners, but we still have funds available. And then also, we still have a downtown business incentive grant program, and we are working with a few people right now on that, but it's still all available, and all those applications and materials are on the borough's website.
Okay, any questions? Ricketts Community Center, I guess they did get to send you a report on Monday, Joe. Do we wanna move that to put that on Monday since that seems to run it all week? Yeah. And I'm going to invite the school district report at this time, Mr. Ron Williams. Instead of Monday, he wanted to give it this evening.
Just afraid I might not be here on Monday. Good evening, thank you. Am I on?
Yep.
Sing a song or two. First of all, I wanna give a big shout-out for CVS. This is not a personal comment. They've just announced that they are no longer going to be selling tobacco products, I'm sorry, Dan, to beginning in October. So, I think that's an incredibly brave move on their part. What I wanted to talk about this evening very briefly is that come May, I think Mark and my superintendent have been discussing this subject, but we are going to kick off 175 years of Pottstown School District with a big bang. On May the 3rd, we will have our marching band, you know, trouncing around High Street, I believe. May the 1st, we are having an open house at our, let me see here. I had this in order at one time. At our high school, we're going to be giving tours of our alumni gallery, which we will have, I think you'll be terribly impressed with what we're doing, what the foundation is doing with the high school area that we are dedicating to the alumni. And then on May 16th, there'll be a fundraiser at the Brookside Country Club. I'm sure everybody in Pottstown's gonna be excited about getting in there. We'll have a community event at the high school, our junior ROTC drill team and whatnot on May 17th. We're making a lot of plans, and I will update them as we move along and let you folks know where we're going, but I'd like to invite anybody and everybody to come on around. Meanwhile, on Saturday, this coming Saturday, the high school is going to be hosting a bingo, and the purpose for the bingo is to raise funds to send some of our kids to Greece, round trip.
Yeah, we wanna bring them back.
We want 'em back. We've just implemented a robotics program in the high school this year. It's begun as a non-curriculum event. The students that have begun to participate in this event have already participated in, I believe it's something like five events so far, have done very well. We are going to turn that into a curriculum program next year. Our career and technical program is going to assume control of that project, and it's an incredibly innovative method of bringing our kids into the world of technology, and we think it's going to do well, just based on the participants we've had so far. And then finally, we'd like, I'd like to encourage you folks to go on to our website, and that is PottstownSchools.com, and look for, I brought hard copies of the Pottstown Pride for folks to take a good look at. We have some incredible pictures. We've got some stories about who we are, what our kids have done over this last year, and what some of our alumni have achieved throughout the years. There's an incredible amount of information online, there's some really wild pictures, and, you know, that's about it for my comment today. If I see you Monday, I'll be here, I'll be back.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Williams? Which brings up, in the past, Travis, you were the representative from the borough. Do you still wanna continue in that capacity?
Yeah.
If someone else is interested, I'm fine. Anyone wanna be? Okay, thank you. Yeah, the other thing too, Mr. Williams, if you wanna do your report on the Wednesday, the committee will hold that way, it'll be on television and...
That would be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we have a proclamation for Bobby Rydell Organ Donor Awareness Day, March 29, 2014. I take, Mayor, this is yours?
Yes, Ben. I'd like to welcome our guests, Mr. Tom Coyle and Lou Bellezzi, who are here to represent the Bobby Rydell Organ Donor Awareness Day, as well as an upcoming concert on March 29th, where Bobby Rydell will be honored, not only for his lifetime achievements as a teen idol in Philadelphia, one of the original ones, but also as an iconic contributor to the music industry and one of the many prolific sounds of Philadelphia. Now, he has found himself in a situation where he is promoting organ donor awareness in such a great degree because he himself has been the recipient of a double organ transplantation. So, we want to acknowledge the Gift of Life donor program, based in Philadelphia, for its initial core support and sponsoring this day, and for the life-giving support that it provides to individuals in need of organ transplantation. On March 29th, at the Pottstown Senior High School, Bobby Rydell, the Dupree's, and the First Ladies of Rock and Soul will perform a concert in his honor. And at this time, I'm going to kinda cut short the commentary about the Bobby Rydell Organ Donor Awareness Day, but tell you that this is a good segue for one of the new initiatives in my office, which is the Mayor's Office on Health, Science, and Medicine. And although many individuals may not qualify for, to be an organ donor, to provide an organ for someone in need, anyone who has a conscience to do so is able to donate their body to science for the advancement of research and the training of medical students. And if you'd like more information on that, you can call me at my office, or you can also get in touch with the tri-county hospice, or probably any hospice provider would be able to give you that information. Also, the Gift of Life donor program is 40 years old this year. They are celebrating 40 years in service of providing organ and tissue donors to those in need. Mr. Bellezzi, if you would meet me over at the microphone, and Mr. Coyle.
Thank you very much. Madam Mayor has taken the time to explain everything so well. I will be very, very short with this, Mr. President and members of the board. I met Tom Coyle a few years back, and I can tell you that he is one person to be very proud of in Pottstown. He's a tireless, unselfish guy that I haven't met the likes of him in many years, what he does, I understand, does for the community. And I have an affinity for what Tom does in his off-time with practicing, I'm a practicing attorney, I should say, recovering from doing that, into transitioning into another life in music. And the meeting Tom with that and see the type of work that he does, it was a pleasure for me to team up with him to put this show on in Pottstown. And having a connection with Bobby Rydell, knowing his recent passing, having it being a double organ recipient, we thought that this would be a great idea to help him in what his endeavor is now in having organ donor awareness. So, what we've done is we've contacted, as Madam Mayor mentioned, the Gift of Life folks, and they are elated to be involved with this. And on the night of the show, March 29th, they will have representatives here in Pottstown with brochures, and also, we'll have a booth in the lobby area of the high school for anyone who is interested in signing up as an organ donor. So, that's basically the gist of what we plan on doing, and as Tom has passed around a flyer for each of you to see, it's certainly a worthy cause. And Tom said something to me last night, which is indicative of Tom. He said, "You know what? How about if we even just save one life?" And I wasn't even thinking of it that way. And it is that profound for those who, and every family has been touched by this one way or the other. So, I do appreciate the time of you folks allowing us to present this, and the school district, I met a few folks in the school district, they are trying to put something together with this to have the kids involved with raising the awareness of the whole community, and it will be a good and proud day for Pottstown on March 29th.
Tommy, you wanna say anything?
I've said it all.
It's always a good show. I mean, Tom, you know, it's, for those of you, I've gone to, I guess, almost all of them and so forth, and the concerts are always fantastic. Of course, you know, I think you have to be older than 45 to know some of these singers.
I didn't dare go near that. Bobby Rydell and Bye Bye Birdie.
Yeah.
Everyone's way too young here to remember that.
No, I do. So, you know, Ginny has gone to the concerts too many times, so they are fantastic. And those of you who can be in attendance, I know Tom would appreciate it, and I know I'll be there.
It started out one show.
Yeah.
I think we're on like the 40th.
And he, I know, I think it was the last time you were, I think this'll be my last one, people talked him into putting, it was three shows ago, I think you were gonna give...
Well, these were black.
Yeah. So, thank you very much, and we are, you know, we have a lot of great people in this town, and Tom, you are certainly one of those people.
Well, thank you for...
Thank you, folks.
It's our pleasure. Okay, number five, this is being scratched. We're up to number six, the Public Works Master Concept. The gentleman wanna come forward?
Hi all, thank you for having us. I'm Martin Kimmel, and this is Tyler Midnack. Thank you, that's perfect. From Kimmel, Wogret Architects. Recall, back in July of 2010, and probably a little bit earlier than that, you went through a selection process for architects to look at the design for the new Public Works facility. You selected us, and we proposed at that time, rather than to jump in the whole project to enter in kind of a two-step arrangement where we would do what we call the Master Concept Plan first, which gathers everything we needed to know about the site, about the needs of the Public Works Department, about the neighborhood, to do conceptual design to fit on that site, to budget for the project, and so on. And then only after that was sort of understood and approved, and knowing that you wanted to move forward, would we enter into step two, which is then the full design for public bidding and construction and so on. And so where we sit tonight is at the end of that step one, that master concept planning process, ready to start step two to get us into the real details of the project. So, the manager, Flanners, requested that I just present to you kind of a recap of what we've done today, so the slides you see today are about that. First step there really describes the process that we went through, which was, was already handled. Things that we learned from staff and from you all is that you wanted the new facility to be a good neighbor, you want it to be environmentally friendly, but not reckless with regards to how you spend to become environmentally friendly, that you wanted to sort of erase the existing Public Works facility, which is not a great neighbor, and, you know, just have just a better facility that would serve the staff better, and then by serving the staff better and protecting your equipment better, they could serve the residents better. Obviously, in the recent weeks, we've seen the best, I think, of what Public Works folks do when we really need them to do it. I stumbled in here just minutes ago because I tried four different routes to get over Valley Forge Mountain from where I live to 422 before I found one that was open, so there's a lot of folks working hard right now on cleaning that up. So, at any rate, that was good information. One of the other things is, the existing Public Works building is kind of, it's the old-school approach. You know, it is, you call that down and dirty, and it's just kind of a garage in a space with ramshackle kind of pieces added on, so we wanted to be more thoughtful. And so, you were looking for a little bit of innovation, again, with an eye toward fiscal responsibility at the same time. Through our programming process, we came up with about 20 thou, I'm sorry, 8,900, I'm gonna actually read these in order so I don't screw it up here. Because keeping in mind, you have a number of things. You have outdoor Public Works area that the folks need to just do the work. You need covered storage to protect equipment that's not heated and is effectively carport-like. You need garage space, which is a little, you know, is next level up, which is storage space that has minimal heat to help, you know, to pull a plow in and allow the stuff to melt off of it, and so on and so forth, and to do some minor work on vehicles. And then you have the actual mechanic bays where you do maintenance on, you know, the entire borough fleet. So, those are all the important pieces of it. So, what we have is just about 1,900 square feet of staff space, which includes the administration for Public Works and locker rooms, and space for people to take a break and have lunch and the things that those folks need to do. The maintenance bays, which are the kind of the heavy mechanic's bays, 3,300 square feet. You have the heated storage bays at 7,200, I round that off for you, for a total building of, enclosed building of 11,000, just under 700 square feet. And then our open-air covered components, which in addition to vehicle storage, also includes salt bay, that needs to be covered, of course, and some other components, some things for the police to impound vehicles and so on, at another 8,900 square feet. And then we're anticipating about 20,000 square feet of elbow room for all that to happen. It's really outdoor, we'll call that paved space, but it's not enclosed in any way. So, that's the total program that we learned. It fit right in line with other facilities, based on the size of your fleet and the work that you do, so it's, I think, quite reasonable for what the intent was. With that, you presented to us a site that is bounded by Prince Street and Rice Street with, just off of High Street, in sort of a slightly L-shaped piece of property, that I think today's a good day to kind of recognize that you have, having access to two streets is not a bad thing, when sometimes one street can be blocked when you wouldn't think it would be. So, we wanted to take advantage of that, but key among that is we really looked at the neighborhood around it and said, "Okay, you can kind of just plop a big garage and a lot of noise and mess in the middle of a neighborhood, or you could figure out maybe a way to have that feel better in the neighborhood." And that's what, you know, what our job was to do. So, with that, Tyler just switched to the proposed site plan, and I'll stand up for a second, just so that it's kind of clear to everyone. The idea for the facility is that, rather than put the building in the middle with a big fence around it, which is kind of the traditional way to do that, we've actually taken the building and we've wrapped the buildings around the edge so that the buildings themselves screen all of the work and all of the noise and whatnot from the neighborhood, rather than kind of put it in the middle of the neighborhood. We have actually used that very successfully in a couple other locations over time, and we thought it was a good fit here. So, if we start in the lower right-hand corner of the slide that you see in the blue area, that is our small area of what we call staff space. So, there's an office, a gathering area, locker room facilities, and so on. One of the other benefits of this layout is it makes it very easy and very economical to secure, because in the same way that it contains all the work, it also, you know, kind of, the building protects itself, and you only have two ingress points. So, as we move counterclockwise from my lower right, blue corner, you have a gated entrance that would allow vehicles and pedestrians to pass through there with controlled access. And then as you move vertically on the sheet, in the gold on the right-hand side are the maintenance bays and everything associated with the mechanics, which is kind of a higher level of building because it's an occupied space and it needs proper ventilation and good air quality and so on for the folks working there. And then as you start to turn the corner at 1:00 and then moving all the way to, I guess you'd say 11:00 on that, in the gold is the, we call it heated vehicle bays because they have doors, they're enclosed, they have heat that, you know, in a day like today would keep it, you know, in the mid-50s to allow for some snow melt and so on. And then in the upper left-hand corner, we have covered areas for, you know, stuff that they use, brining and, you know, some of the technical operations that, again, need cover but don't need to be inside. Then as you move down, in the two gray areas that you see, we have the large vehicle open bays, that again are large carports with clearance for truck vehicles but without doors. And then as we come back along the bottom with the small yellow things are the pickup truck-sized vehicle bays with the police impound in the corner. We have effectively a large kind of donut of circulation that really allows quite ample room for everything to get done in there, again, without it being out in the neighborhood. You know, and occasionally have to bring debris in or sort it, again, that's not an eyesore. It allows for parking in the center. Even that green area that we show will slope the paving to that area, and that will be kind of like a biofilter that will help filter the water that would run off that parking lot before it moves down toward our main stormwater basin, which is in the lower right outside of our, outside of our walls, that's labeled, if you can see, it's stormwater area in the lower right. Again, we have a secondary entrance off of Rice at the very far left, which allows, you know, again, a good flow-through of traffic, even if you had a big delivery of salt, say from a full tractor-trailer, it could, it could pull in either entrance, come around the circle back up, dump into the salt bay instead of onto the ground, which is a good environmental and non-wasteful kind of thing to do, and then be able to pull out very safely with good, you know, visual clearances and so on. So, we thought it was a good layout, we presented it to staff, and they looked at it, and it was a committee of staff, made a few minor tweaks, and then they approved it as being the right fit for the borough. Questions about that before we advance?
Does the square footage number, is that even room for expansion, or was there any need for you to change?
Yeah. In our conversations with staff, they did look at the foreseeable future of fleet size and employee size, and there's a modest amount of kind of spare space in that, so this is building in, but I mean, it's a, if it's even, I don't think it's even 10%, expansion's kind of built into it, and coming from where they are, no one could imagine needing more in anybody's foreseeable future, even though this really, you know, mostly meets what you don't have now more than it thinks toward that, but we feel very comfortable with it.
You know, these people you have employed here, I want to give a dime, people...
Doug, how many people, how many staff members could you conceivably have on-site?
It's concerned about parking?
Seventeen. There's parking on, we anticipate that some of the staff will have to park on Prince Street. There is on-street parking there, so that shouldn't be an issue.
Yes, we did, actually, at our last meeting, when we presented this as final, we discussed that, and we believe we can add additional off-street parking. Of course, you can't see it, it's too astounded to go over here. That we'll be able to have some head-in parking right along this drive and here, and then just move these trees back. It'll be a very economical way because the lane's already built to have it off-street, so, you know, to be less of a nuisance in the neighborhood.
So, are they gonna be encouraged to park out there? Is there, is there a major need for visitor parking? Do you have that much visitors visit this facility, that much or no?
We haven't gotten down, there is some adjustments, and there have been some changes that aren't noted yet, but we have reviewed this, and there are some tweaks that have to happen yet. Whether all that visitor parking stays or not is still not resolved.
Yeah, and that really is partly, and that's, I think it's labeled employee/visitors, so we anticipate maybe two spaces for visitors at most, and you even talked, Doug, about maybe visitors would just park on the street anyway, and then between the two of them, you could get really all the employee parking off the street altogether, which would not be a bad idea.
Typically, Mr. Kirkland, if any visitors were, things that occur at that facility are coming to see Doug here at the hall. Visitors they have at that facility are more deliveries and vendors, tool vendors and that type of stuff.
I guess, then, you would need mangates versus an entire gated gate there for employees to get through if they're gonna be parking outside the gated area?
Yeah, I mean, that's a detail that we haven't totally broached, but you'd probably have a rolling gate, which are very durable for the vehicles, and then a mangate, and the intent was to have that electronically controlled. So, with that as part of our master concept planning process, we were also asked to study how the facility might look in the neighborhood, so we have a series of views, which are sort of before, so this is from Prince Street looking, I guess that would be northeast, I believe. Good for me, thank you. So, or northwest, sorry. So, that's kind of as it looks now on a slightly warmer day. And the building goes into the foreground, so you see on the far-left-hand side of that image is the, is the staff space, and then in the center of the image is the gated rolling entrance that we just discussed, and you can even kind of see a spot where a mangate would go. And then as you work to the right, you can see the high base, the building is a little bit higher in the right center that allows trucks to be up on lifts, and so we only, you know, put that height into the building in the spaces where that would actually happen as it moves off to the north. You can see it's, you know, kind of a civic-looking building, you know, the intent is to have it be very durable so that it's, you know, as zero maintenance as you can make a maintenance building, is the idea, allow some daylighting into the garage bays, which you see in the high, the high white areas on both of those buildings, so not really views so much, but daylight, so you don't have to use the lights and, you know, and it's a better, not dark kind of cave space where folks will be working all day. We'll move on, so we're looking more, you know, directly into the site from Prince, and you can almost get a sense of where High Street is off to the far, far left, so this looks right into our gated entrance. See, you get an effect from that straight on to the area where you can drive through under there. You can see very far in the distance the salt storage bay and the drive lane way back that takes you out to the other, to the other street.
It's looking easy.
Yeah, that's looking the wrong way, right? Oh, okay, so, we didn't have a good image from inside the site, but looking... Oh, okay, so, we didn't have a good image from inside the site, but looking east, but that was from the street, so you almost forget that one. But this is now inside of the center, unless I misunderstood what I looked at. At any rate, so now you're inside, and you get a good sense of being in there, you're very enclosed from, from the surrounding neighborhood. So on the left-hand side, you see, you know, garage doors that, that open into the bays. On the far right, you can get a sense of the covered carports, and then you're looking back through the main entrance with the gate open. And as I mentioned, you have some parking and vegetation even in the middle. And here we are looking, we're
Looking south.
South on Prince again, so you get a different, you get a different end of the building looking at the entrance here. And this, again, you get a sense where the building steps back down, and we have storage and so on, and the feel, again, of the enclosure and the idea that, you know, we've left enough room, we're off the street enough that we can landscape around it and have it, I think, feel really, really good in, in, in the, in the space. And now, now we're way back in Rice looking across from that entrance. And you can see the other entrance. The parking that we said would be off the drivelanes would be right there on either side of that driveline as it goes in. The taller piece, again, is where the salt storage is, again, that would allow a, a large vehicle to kind of, you know, back slightly into that and then lift the dump. But it also gives it kind of a clear gate approach, and as you mentioned, we have to add a mangate at that back one once we have parking. We envision, you know, the building being, you know, a 50-plus-year-type building, you know, block and steel, no real wood frame or anything that, you know, nothing that would hit the ground that couldn't take salt and not corrode and, and again, be as maintenance-free as possible. So we have some good protocols for that that are not expensive but are super durable and also, you know, stay clean-looking and don't kind of get the tattered effect that metal buildings and, you know, metal buildings are the super-cheapest way to go for that, but they're, when you have pole buildings and metal buildings for that, they're, you know, 25-year, I mean, people stretch their life, but when they, they go down, they tend to go down pretty quick and pretty hard and look not very good doing it, so you could expect this to, to last you a good long time, as long as people can drive well and not bang into. Even that, actually, we'll have bollards and things to protect the walls and the doors so that, you know, people are in a hurry or the snow's out, you know, and they bang into something, it's going to be something that was built to be banged into. Questions about that?
I have questions about the entrance, the steel girders. Are they, are, are they going to have to be painted, or are they, like, wrapped, or are they, you know what I'm saying?
That's a good catch. Actually, probably what we will do is they will probably be, they're, they're shown as gray because we'll probably have them galvanized, and they'll be exposed galvanized finish, which is, doesn't have to ever be repainted and is very, very durable. Hard to make it look quite that silvery with the computer, so we went with gray, but that would be probably the intent. Obviously, we didn't pick finishes and colors or anything in full detail yet, but that's the solution for a lot of that, and the gates would be the same.
Okay, and I was wondering about the area where the offices and locker rooms and stuff are now. I know you have like a men's locker room and stuff like that. Do you have an area for, like, visitors, like, if there's, not necessarily visitors, but even people that do deliveries, like, if it's a woman delivery and there's like a facility if she has to, if that person has to use it?
Yes, we actually do have a separate women's area that is smaller. The anticipation that you might have women's employees were actually required by code to have it, whether you have an employee or not, and quite a number of facilities we work with eventually, you know, have a, have females working, just like you might in police. So that is in there. It might not be clearly labeled, but it's there. Doug, can you point it out? It's, actually, go the other way. Or can you see that sign? Okay.
Eh, kind of. I can, I have it on my
It's, it's abbreviated W.
Oh, I see, WS.
Yeah, WS locker room. So yes, it's in there.
I have two questions. One, has the layout been prepared with all the existing and proposed equipment to make sure everything fits and processes flow?
Yes.
Okay. Two, solar isn't economical for this geographic area yet, but over the life of this building, I suspect it will be. Will the roofs be able to support in the future?
That's a good question also. One of the reasons that all of the roofs that are shown are very low-slope, so not steeply-sloped or gables, is so that 100% of that roof area could take solar if you so choose to add it, and you would get the best orientation possible versus if you have a gabled roof, then usually, you know, one half is really good and the other half is really not.
Well, I noticed the line from east to west doesn't really go east to west. So we, we couldn't mount the panels parallel to the roof, the plane of the roof. They're going to have to be tilted. And that's all I'm wondering, is, is the support there to withhold the loads at that time?
Yes.
Good.
Good questions.
Are the mechanicals are on the ground?
Uh, you know, the, that's to be fully determined, but for the heated garage bays, what we will likely recommend is radiant gas, so the units actually hang in the ceiling space inside. Radiant heats better, heating up equipment and helping it to melt without the cost of trying to heat large volumes of air, because garages have large volumes, and when you try to heat all that air, it's expensive. The, there would be a bit of ventilation equipment that would also be associated with the mechanic bays that frankly, we haven't located. It might be, you know, wall fans that exhaust the side, they could be updraft fans, so there might be a couple mushrooms on the roof on that high piece on the right. And then the, the employee administrative space would likely have a very basic split system like you might have, you know, with a gas furnace and an outdoor condenser, so you wouldn't need to use up roof space for any kind of big mechanicals, except, again, possibly a couple vents on the, the mechanic space. Anything else?
Good.
Well, in closing, it is our distinct, we've enjoyed working with the staff, we think it's a great plan, we're looking forward to executing it and coming back one day with final plans and really good bids. And we've been challenged and tasked to make sure we can get everything you have for the money that you have available, and we will work as hard as we can to do that very thing.
Okay, number seven, permit issues, amend existing ordinance. You should have some paperwork at your desk. Yep, Chuck.
The council recalls back in 2004, I think the final regulations were promulgated with respect to the Uniform Construction Code, which we know as the statewide building code. And part of that law allowed municipalities that regulated and provided permits for certain types of construction to continue to do that. On page two of the draft, there are a description of items that the borough had traditionally required permits for, and those ordinances had been in place prior to 1999, meaning they were grandfathered. Mr. Place suggested that it might be appropriate if we took all those requirements and incorporated them in one ordinance, so it was easy to locate and easy to find, and you didn't have to always produce the ordinance from before. So all we're suggesting and we're asking council to consider is to allow us to basically clarify and confirm our existing practice through this ordinance. And again, the items that we're talking about are pretty much listed on page two. They've been regulated by the borough in the past, but rather than to go through the ordinances, it makes sense to put it in one document. And Keith, I don't know if you want to add anything, but I think it was a good suggestion to kind of put it all together, so there'd be no further question or concern about where the ordinances were and where the requirements were for the issuance of the permits. You actually have two things in front of you, just so you're clear. One, one is just the process, which is highlighted in yellow. The draft of the ordinance in the second page I was referring to is really items one through four and then four sub A through G, which are the items that would be subject to the regulation.
Are we saying that we are now asking to obtain a permit for things that we don't currently need a permit to do with, with certain things, repairs or, or things that you do to your home?
Traditionally, before the statewide building code came in effect, we required permits for all of these things.
Okay.
And typically, as a developed borough, you want to make sure people are doing things to their older homes correctly. There were some questions raised as to whether or not the ordinances had been in place, which we believe they were, but this just basically puts everything together in one document. So when someone says, "Do I need a permit?", here's the ordinance that says you need the permit.
Okay.
So the practice is not an intent to change anything, just to confirm present practice. And I don't want to speak for the director of licensing and inspection, so I'll let him talk.
Correct. It's basically the ordinance that we had prior to, there was requirements for these permits at that point in time for the work that was being done, and we're just trying to clarify it and get it corrected where it's speed, make it more efficient.
So the requirement for permits has not changed?
Hmm, the requirements for permits prior to 2004, they were required to obtain permits for this, and the borough was obtaining permits from applicants for the work. There was a discussion that came up, and this is just a way of clearing everything up and correcting and rectifying and making it more efficient.
When you say prior to 2004, does that mean from 2004 to 2014, the permits were not being required for these?
No, permits were being required. The ordinance that was in place allows us to do that with state of the public. There was some conversation with the state in reference to whether or not the ordinance that were in place
Addressed the requirements.
Addressed the requirements promptly. This is basically felt suspicious to that, and this was at a request, pardon myself, in discussions with the state UCC.
I think, I think what we don't have to ask is, is the requirement for a person to get permits to do general repairs around their home, is it more the same, more or less of the same, the, the ordinance, what we're changing here?
It's the same. It's just that we're clarifying because there was some concern or dissension amongst different people in reference to whether or not they really are required to have permits. And this clarifies that, yes, they do need to have permits, they've always needed to have permits, and basically to end any
So you haven't made any more difficult
Yeah. Now, the reality check is what this is doing is helping the public, serving them by providing inspections of work that's being done by contractors, because they're going to come in and apply by night, you know, and tell homeowners they don't need to have permits for things. We want to clear it up and be able to, like, yes, you do need the permits, we're here to protect you, we're here to do the inspections, we're going to make sure the order is done right.
Any other discussion?
This doesn't just apply to contractors, right? This applies too to, to the individual homeowner that's doing the repairs.
Correct. And that's also so homeowners have an understanding of what's correct and what's not, for their safety.
Monday evening, then we will be doing a listing list to advertise or
Right, authorizing to prepare and advertise.
Have you ever looked at, I'm sure you have thoroughly, but have you noticed any areas where you couldn't make it easier on the average person to do repairs on their home without obtaining, you know, the major paperwork, just make it easier for, for the average person to do repairs on their home?
We are starting to streamline the process, we're advising the permits openly. If anybody ever needs to come in and ask questions, the door's always open there. We'll work with the public. We cannot design for them because then we take the liability. What we are doing is requiring them to supply with firm application, drawings of what they're going to be doing. And if it's minor, it doesn't need to be a detailed drawing, but enough that we can understand so that we make sure that even plumbing is being done correctly, or whatever electrical work is being done, is being reviewed and inspected. Mechanical, people, you know, change out a heat source, and they think that it's basically going to work the same as the old one. The reality check is the volume that the newer systems are designed to handle versus the energy efficiency. You may cause conflict for many if that's too large, where it's not working properly, it's costing more money. So we're just trying to help the public.
Yeah, I just heard, you know, just stories in the past about people who, you know, say, "Oh, you know, I just wanted to fix my porch and, you know, I have to get my permits and do this and that, it's such a hassle, you know, just to do minor repairs or something."
I'm going to state something here. You hired me recently, past is past, we have major changes coming
Good.
For the better.
Good.
That's the way I look at it.
Let's get it here.
Some of those changes too, Joe. Prior, well, this is when Dan and I got on planning and so forth, I mean, there was a review process for the planning commissions and people do it in their decks.
For a deck, for an awning, we had to look at everything.
Yes, we, we cleared a lot of that up and so forth, and this is taking it the next step. Pause.
When you say streamline paperwork, you're going to make the verbiage a little clearer because I, I was looking at the one for a permit, which is the same to replace singles on a roof as it is to do structural changes to a roof, and it's very confusing.
There will be much clarification for applications, yes. It's going to be cleaned up, easier to understand, more public threat.
As you're going through this too, anything that needs to be vetted through the infrastructure, you will be doing that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, number eight, Eileen Schlegel Memorial. This is yours, Mr. Planners?
Thank you, Mr. Planners. We received a letter from Phil Lineback from AEM Architects and Mike Soto from Wilkinson Associates. AEM and Wilkinson are the firms that have assisted us over the years with Memorial Park and recently with the mini golf program, or the mini golf facility at the Gateway. With the recent passing of Eileen Schlegel, our former department head of Parks and Recreation, they have expressed a desire, both Mike and Phil, to present to the borough a memorial to be placed at the mini golf facility. Our staff have taken it upon themselves and procured a granite mounting that that plaque would be placed on, and I'm simply asking for council's permission to have the memorial placed there at their expense, at the expense of AEM Architects and Wilkinson Associates. I believe in your packets, you have a mock-up of what that plaque would look like, and the verbiage would be, has already been developed by our, our Parks and Rec staff.
Okay, so for Monday, then we will be basically voting on proceeding with this. Number nine, miniature golf course sign request. I guess this is yours, Erica?
Sure.
Chuck and Erica.
Well, I'll take it. I think Erica can give you the details, but I think you have some information about the proposed sign for the miniature golf course. And a portion of the sign, or at least a part of the sign, is going to be an electronic sign that's going to have changeable copy on it, so it's electronic and be changed. That type of sign in the zoning district requires a conditional use. And we've talked about this internally, and frankly, the sign that's being proposed, and it's just a small section of the sign that would be electronic and would allow for the message to be displayed, satisfies the criteria in our ordinance. It seemed a little bit senseless to force the borough to pay the fees and have a hearing, a conditional use hearing in front of Borough Council for the borough property and the borough sign. So what we're suggesting is that Borough Council basically approve the conditional use without the need for a formal hearing. And I think you all have the information there, the, what I understand to be the changeable copy portion of the sign is just the part that says, "Opening soon." Is that correct, Erica? The remaining part of the sign is a fixed sign, and that's permitted. So really, the conditional use is just for the fact that there's going to be this electronic or changeable copy sign as part of the overall sign package. And that's what I know, so we're, we're recommending that we approve it without the formality of a hearing.
Correct. Doug and I have been working through sort of the concepts and, you know, tying everything into the operating plan for the site, so I believe you have some rendering for you this evening, and we've been working through that so we can, you know, launch this in April and be on board to really make it presentable and attractive.
The changeable panel, how will this be operated as far as off an iPad or?
It'll be wireless, and we're going to, in the process of getting a Comcast line into the building, and I'm hoping to be a remote in back here so it can be controlled from back here.
All right, my only question is eventually we're going to be getting My only question is eventually we're going to be getting signs to the gateways. These will all be tied together.
Well, that's what we're looking at.
We're working on it together.
Yes.
It's not a very large paneled sign. According to the dimensions, at least on the rendering, is 10 inches by six feet, so it's not going to draw a lot of attention to anything other than allow the information to be posted. And it's well within the size. It's permitted by conditional use.
Okay, that will be listed for Monday. Pottstown Classic Car Club Nostalgia Nights. We have a listing of dates that they want to do. I suppose the first Saturday of the month, starting in May and ending in September.
Ending in September, correct.
And they've been doing this for over 10 years?
At least.
Yeah, it's been quite some time. So I was around the same time, I think, when the angled parking came to play. Maybe 14 years. Okay, any questions on this? This will be listed for Monday evening. Bark for Life, they're asking for a waiver.
That's correct, Mr. Attorney. The Cancer Society's Bark for Life is going to be held on April the 12th, 2014. They have booked Memorial Park for the event, and they are asking that council waive, as has traditionally been done, the $200 rental fee for occupying the fields. There will be no need for staff on site, so there's no overtime expenditures. However, Parks and Recreation is recommending that they still need to pay the electrical cost of $35 regardless of the waivers.
They agree to that?
Yes.
I had a question the last time we were discussing this event. And as a matter of fact, all events where someone is renting the public space for their own private use, that we are making sure that they are providing us with a rider, with their insurance for that million dollars coverage for the liability of any injuries during that event, so we're not responsible.
All the organizations provide us insurance. We request that as one of the conditions of any use of our properties.
So whether the fees waived or not, it still is provided?
Correct.
Yes, it's really a separate issue.
Yes, before they can even acquire a rental, they have to be able to provide that.
Any other questions? Okay, that'll be listed for Monday. Number 12, the Pottstown Police Officers Association want to have a fishing derby on the 24th, and this has been going on for many years also.
Yes, it is.
And they're asking for a waiver too?
They're asking for a waiver of the pavilion rental fee of $100. There'll be no usage of electric, and it will have a, an order and a number of Borough staff at the event not being paid, so there will be plenty of support.
Any questions on this? It's a fun event. Anyone goes and sees a seven-year-old kid pulling out his first trap that's almost as long as he is, it's a great, great day for the fathers and mothers that have their children involved on that day. Okay, demolition of 265 King Street. I guess this is you, Chuck?
It is starting to sound familiar. This had been presented to Borough Council as a request to demolish 265 King Street, I think, last September. And since that time, we've asked for information and received no additional information. And there's been no, to my knowledge, contact with the applicant or the applicant's attorney concerning this. And so my suggestion is that we simply deny any request to demolish 265 King Street for failing to give us any information that would satisfy the requirements of our zoning ordinance. And can't explain why there's been no response, but there hasn't been.
I'm glad because that's a, you know, fantastic structure. Unfortunately, there are a few, you know, places in Pottstown that wouldn't be in the new world if they did turn out parking lots, but this, on the other hand, is, yeah, a job.
Okay, any other comments that will be listed for Monday evening? Number 14, planning commission appointments. We have two individuals that have come forward. One is Jim Dur, who is a current member and is asking to be re-upped again. And the other one is Michael Labanga, and he's, all the information for both candidates is there. So that will be listed for Monday evening, and this is a full year term.
Is it one decision?
This one. Number 15, Harb. Any of the documents there that anyone wants to review or go over or discuss? 301K, 978 High, 990 High Street. And there's one administrative way to prove.
Can I go back for a minute? I'm sorry, on the planning commission?
Yes.
Michael's not, I know that sometimes he's here, he's not here tonight, but I don't know anything about him other than he's Representative Painter's chief of staff, so I don't know. And looking, he's got Representative Painter's address on the, whatever email I guess it is that he sent. So I don't even know, does he live in the Borough? Does he have a connection to the Borough? Anything other than he works for Representative Painter? Do we know anything?
He owns properties.
He owns property in the Borough, that's all.
Okay.
I don't know if he resides in the Borough.
We can find that out for Monday, get an address from him.
Thank you.
And it looks like with the Harb, Mr. Manastre was re-elected chair, and Levi was vice chair. Patricia Dur was the secretary. Okay. Now on to councilor's general discussion. I'll start over here with you, Mr. Kirkland?
No need.
Well, I got my first complaint. Well, he was very polite and nice to me, but it had to do with, I guess, the heightened amount of parking enforcement, particularly with a, you know, 25 feet from the curb. You know, obviously, our ordinance is here for our safety, and it should be obeyed, on the other hand, especially given with the conditions of the last couple of weeks with the weather. I'm pretty certain I'll get more calls for people that, you know, parked this way for, you know, several years without, and I guess it's almost anticipated. Has any other councillors received calls of that nature?
And that's because of the snow, the issue.
And actually.
Is this parking in front of their own house or?
I believe it's, he's here enough to speak. But I believe it was on his block, and he was upset that he had to actually park several blocks away from his house to, you know, get to where he needed to go. Like, I guess, I mean, it's important to enforce our ordinances, but also, I mean, it's kind of a give or take, I mean, it kind of eased the frustrations of our constituents as well.
And parking is an issue, especially, you know, without snow, you know?
And it is, I mean, I looked at the block, I checked it out. I'm familiar, I believe it's the 400 block of Walnut, which is just a block away from me. And I guess it'd be one thing if there's like no cars there at all and the individual's like parked all the way, you know, at the intersection. Another thing, if he's just five feet over with a, with a complete slam pack full of cars too. But then again, we have to enforce our ordinances as well, so.
Parking is state law.
Yeah.
This is the curbs and what is all state law.
It's not just to annoy our constituents.
Well, it's a, you know, you've taken concern, you've showed that you did have concern, but, you know, there again too, we need to follow our ordinances, whether they're ours or state or federal, so it's something we are sworn to do. But thank you for bringing that up. But it does raise an issue as far as with parking, you know, when there's snow, it becomes a problem. People just don't shovel it out, and there is nowhere sometimes for the snow to go. When, especially on the blocks where you got the houses right against the sidewalk, and, you know, then you need the snow, at least one parking place to take up, you know, for the snow that you're piling and so forth. But one good thing tomorrow, there's going to be less snow than there was today. Because it's going to be better. Not like grass and weeds, that just continues to grow.
I have two things. One, in adopting the new rules for speaking at the committee of the whole meeting and the wording about signing in before, before in advance, which, okay, I can understand that. But if we could change, because most people take the stuff when they read it verbatim. So we have the statement in there that you must sign in, you must have the subject matter that you're speaking on. Now, some people aren't speaking about anything that's on the agenda, and that's fine, they'll know their subject matter. But if you look at the agendas that the public receives, it's very vague. They don't have the same information that, the opportunity that we have of seeing all the reports. So they're looking at a very vague agenda, and they might not know whether they want to speak on a subject or not because it hasn't been discussed yet. So they sign in advance. They don't really know if they want to speak on a subject or what subject that they want to speak on, but they're required to sign in and state a subject. And I'm afraid if they read these rules and take it verbatim, they might be reluctant to want to speak at the meeting.
I mean, a lot of times, the subject is not, I mean, a lot of people won't put down the subject with, just say, just, you know, a general vague, you know, agenda items they'll put down.
All right, so they do have the opportunity to do that.
Yeah.
Also, the sheet's not going to be picked up until this moment, as Mr. Gary just did anyhow, so if somebody could come up and sign in.
After.
During the discussion.
You know, unless it was, you know, crowd full, then it might take 20 minutes for people to sign in if they're, it's becoming an issue, but, you know, it's certainly can be, give a little latitude when we're moving along on that.
Wonderful. Oh, and the other thing was, and I do apologize, I was trying to secure a place for my first award meeting in February. That didn't happen. The place that I want to have it at, their board doesn't meet until next Monday for approval, so it won't be until March for my first award meeting.
We admire your tenacity. And just let the other councillors know, as long as, I guess, as long as four, no more than three show up at your meeting. Are you going to advertise it or?
Yes, absolutely. As soon as, as soon as I have the place, as soon as they give me the approval, I'm going to do flyers, I'll do a sound off, I'll announce it at the next committee of the whole meeting.
Councillors want to attend it?
And I'm sure the, the public would be very happy to see the Borough manager or the chief of police. Or both.
Yeah, and just so we're clear, the sunshine law talks about a pre-arranged gathering. So if you had a ward meeting and councillor just showed up to be part of sitting in the audience, I don't think that violates anything. You could have all seven there, as long as it's not pre-arranged and you're not there for the purpose of discussing agency business, you could all sit in the audience and listen and listen to what the people said. It's the question when you all start to get together and talk, and then it becomes, you know, discussing agency business potentially. So again, pre-arranged, which it wouldn't be because it's your ward meeting. So again, I'm not trying to discourage anyone from coming out to listen to the residents with their concerns.
How about if we're sitting at the front, but, and all we're doing is answering questions? Is that?
Well, again, if you're participating in the meeting and there's a quorum, then it's starting to look more like a pre-arranged gathering if you're discussing agency business. Again, it's not a council meeting, it's a ward meeting, and certainly you're welcome to attend, but don't turn it into a council meeting.
And certainly, since it's Cheryl's meeting, you know, if you would want to do the same at a meeting, the councillors would want to sit in the audience, you know, feel free to do that also. Anything else? Madam Mayor?
I'd just like to reiterate the Bobby Rydell Organ Donor Awareness Day for March 29th. It's a lot, it's a lot of advance notice, especially for the planning of the concert. And as they have described, they will have booths there to, they could save one life. I think that's what I heard them say, they could save one life. And imagine if that could be one person who would be a donor that would be from Pottstown. And there's some numbers that are going to come up on the screen. If you'd like to call the Gift of Life donor program in Philadelphia to find out general donor information or to find out how to specifically be a kidney donor. And I'd like to say that I also sat in the orientation for some time with our new officers, seven of them, five of which will be on the street momentarily very soon and are still orienting to the Borough. And we had some nice conversation, question and answers and comments. And just wanted to say as well that public safety is a two-way street, you know, as part of governance, which is what we're here to do. We provide the infrastructure in which people live, recreate, worship, raise their family, and therefore, our responsibility in public safety is one side of the road. I'm a firm believer in dialogue and communication, and I believe I've more than amply showed that during my first term, but I see now that there's a need for different layers to be added to that conversation, that the other side of the street, that the public has a proactive side to play, especially in the area of community policing. So police work, as we know, is primarily reactive. There's a call, and then there's a response. That's reactionary. But the part that the community plays to ensure their own safety is proactive. So one of the ways that the community can be proactive is reporting crimes, protecting yourself by locking your doors and locking the doors of your cars. Sometimes it's very simple things that prevent very large problems. So I just wanted to revocalize the stand of public safety and community policing in light of our recent incidents, and also to remind myself and the councillors as well that we live in a very impulsive society and that we would exercise the most wisdom and jurisprudence when we're talking to people and about specific incidents that happen in our community. Thanks.
Thank you for those words. Just a little bit on myself, I'd like to thank staff and the worker bees in Borough Hall. It's been a trying two or three weeks with the weather we've been having in Southeastern Pennsylvania. It's not just our community, it's all the communities. I mean, to a point that, you know, we run out of salt, or we were down to just the bedroom and so forth, which speaks volumes for this salt dump. How much more can we store versus what we have now, Doug?
Well, we haven't worked that out, but that's, that's going to be an important element of that issue.
Yeah, now granted, this is unusual. I mean, we haven't had snows like this in the last three, four years, maybe, Doug, I think. The problem being is that we're getting hit one after another, and the cold weather and it's not being able to melt. And I've gone and traveled around this Borough and being, you know, retired, I can do this. There are some streets that definitely are good, there are some that, you know, need some attention to, and the Borough's working on it, but it's, when you have 60-plus miles of roads, it certainly is, you know, a daunting task, and, you know, these guys are working round the clock. Some of these guys, you know, the overtime that they're putting in, which adds and kills our budget, certainly, we, no way did we budget this amount or think we would have this. So it definitely puts strain on not only our budget, but our workers, but the community in general, since, you know, patients and nerves run ragged now. I know I only received one phone call, but I'm sure staff received many, many phone calls. And, you know, it's, you know, everyone, and their concerns and drives are legitimate to them. And certainly, we do our best, and it's not like we're neglecting. And unfortunately, sometimes when you plow, you know, we're not going to plow curb to curb, and the streets aren't all going to be there. There's some areas, when you don't have salt, you're not able to put down to speed up the process, you know, you rely on Mother Nature to do it and so forth. But it's been trying, please hang in there with us, community. We're doing our best, and, you know, this is certainly unusual circumstances, and and, you know, this is certainly unusual circumstances, and, you know, if we had a way, we certainly would have no snow. You know, that's money that, you know, certainly, we could use and put to other, other things. And throwing on top of that, you know, when you have a water main break, then how many, Doug, have we had of those recently?
Since January.
You know, and these are the same guys that are plowing the streets, you know, filling the potholes, and, you know, this is all, and it's not like we have, you know, countless members. These guys deserve a little time off to be with their families, so it's, you know, certainly they enjoy the money, but it gets to a point that it's, you know, it's wearing on them also, and so we're doing our best, you know, is it perfect? Certainly not, but, you know, if you have concerns, please call your councillors, they'll address it and, you know, do the best we can. Is there any comments from citizens present?
Can I just, I didn't sign in, but, yes. Good evening, again, and I wanted to say, I've spent the last month, since our last, borough's last meeting, on the run. I've been, I've attended meetings with state and federal representatives, a number of us were in Washington this last weekend, not from, not from Pottstown, but a number of school board administrators and directors met for a conference down in Washington. Last week, Dr. Sparagana and I, and a number of representatives from the school district, attended a conference in New York City. It's been a harrowing month, and what I want to say is, in this interaction, as I've met with various kinds of legislators, various kinds of politicals, you know, as we've mingled together, the one important element that keeps coming out is, as school board directors, almost universally, we do not work for a salary. Council folks, I know those big bucks that you get for these meetings are real important, you know, why we do it is a subject that keeps coming up. And I just want to come in here this evening and say this, after going, meeting so many people over this last month, who do the kind of work that we do, who interact with each other to try to find solutions to the problems that we, that we encounter along the way, and I don't think we say it enough, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Johnson?
My name's Jack Johnson. I've lived in Pottstown for about 10 years, and I live on the corner of two one-way streets, and I've parked in the same spot for as long as I've lived there. And so what, I'm addressing, you know, point seven on our, on our list today, which was amending ordinances, and I'm gonna take a specific experience and try to address what I think is a really general issue that will affect, that does affect a lot of residents in Pottstown. And in all the time that I've lived in Pottstown, I have not received a ticket for where I've parked, okay? And that was until last week. And it seemed unusual that it was only after all this amount of time that it was decided to be enforced, but looking at the ticket is where my concern came. It was not that I had a ticket, or that I had to pay money, or anything like that, it was that the ticket refers to an ordinance that requires parking 25 feet from a corner. And as you brought up, you know, it's a statewide thing, but, you know, Pottstown is different than Asheville, which is different than Scranton, which is different than Harrisburg, all the towns have their own different needs. And specifically, Ward 1 in Pottstown has some specific needs as it pertains to the amount of residents, the amount of houses, the amount of cars, and so on. In the congested Ward 1, if all the cars had to move 25 feet from the corner, because we can walk it right now and see that nobody's 25 feet from the corner, and it's nice that there's that lenience on the enforcement, however, there's also the fear that it could be enforced at any given time, and people shouldn't have to park in fear of whether or not that will be enforced. There should be some stability to parking rules and regulations. So if we took everybody who lives on the corners and moved them 25 feet down, we'd be displacing about two cars per residence, and all the cars would be about three residences down. So that's six per side of street, and it's just, it really doesn't make sense for Ward 1 or Pottstown in general. And while the parking problem is a long-term issue, and I realize that, I would like the borough to consider amending this ordinance to 10 feet specifically where you're on the opposite side of two one-way streets, because it seems to me that the ordinance was brought in for emergency vehicles and things needing to get through, and on the opposing side of one-way streets, cars don't really have, they don't come near the other side of the street, where the problem is, is on the same side of the one-way street. So if there could be that type of amendment, that would be good. So I realize that's why it was brought in, and seeing how this is not needed to be enforced in the last 10 years, I think this minor adjustment would be a win-win for all the residents. So I would like, at least for the borough, to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. It'll be, I guess, brought up at our safety committee, the chairman's there, and he will have it listed as far as discussion.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say a couple of things real quick, to appreciate the public servants we have, recent crummy officers. I've had an incident recently where roofers set off our fire alarm, and the guys were there eight minutes before we could even call them and tell them it was wrong. And all the guys plowing and everything, they've got a tough time right now. I just want to say a shout-out to all of them. And the other thing real quick was, I wondered if there's any way you could consider putting the meetings on YouTube. I don't even use cable anymore, I do everything on the internet, and a lot of people are doing that more often. That's all.
And something, I guess, PC TV is, I don't know if that's something you can do?
No problem.
Okay. That was an easy one. Okay, we have executive items?
Here we go.
Okay, we are adjourned.